Could we have everyone please rise for the pledge? One, we do have one change to the agenda. There will be an executive session that will be added as item number 10. Item 11 will be to come back from executive session and item 12 will be to adjourn the meeting. So we need a motion to approve the agenda with the following changes. Motion by Carrie, second by Barb. All in favor? Aye. And Jess, do you want to either give a thumbs up or a yes?
Yes.
Just so we have it on. Okay, thank you. Motion Carrie, thank you. And I'd like to welcome our newest board member Jessica Kraus virtually to our first meeting. It's good to have a full board again. So we're excited. We're going to move right on to our recognitions and presentations and we'll start with our capital project update with Julian.
Can everybody hear me here? On the Zoom, is it going through all? Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. Here today to talk to you guys about the capital project for phase three. We're just at the halfway point now. We've wrapped up phase 3.1 and 3.2, which was Vats Park. And I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about the future work and phasing and the way that's going to be broken down for the the future phases coming up here. So the first sub-phase that we're going to be pursuing here is phase 3.3. The scope is centralized at Prospect Elementary. It includes the Prospect Elementary addition, which you can see the floor plan that Stiglitz has developed here. It also includes some renovation areas, which includes some classroom conversions in the pre-K wing, upgrading some bathrooms and adding some faculty bathrooms in within the existing building and then some corridor finished improvements as well. And then lastly, some scope that that needed to happen there, the roofs were getting out of warranty. So all the roofs at the existing building are going to be replaced within this this sub-phase. As far as the schedule is concerned for this this phase, Stiglitz is just wrapping up the the design right now, going into the month of October. So they'll be planning to submit to SCD towards the end of October. With the SCD review that puts us in a bid period around late winter of 2021, rolling into the winter of 2022. And then with construction starting in the summer of 22, there's going to be a little bit of a delay from the bid opening period to the start of construction, just with the heavy demolition that's going to be involved with the addition here, as well as the thought of trying to give Gail and her students a little bit of reprieve from just wrapping up the phase two project as well. So that construction will start the as soon as the kids get out in the summer 2022 there. The next sub-phase will be phase 3.4, which would wrap up the the phase three referendum. The scope of work over here includes the Native American Services Suite renovation, which converts the current business office addition shown here in red into the Native American Services Suite. It also includes the district office addition, which is shown here, the the big addition added off to the side of the current business, business office suite there. And then some of the blue areas here are private offices that you can see here with some more collaborative space shown here in yellow on that floor plan. It also includes some facade upgrades, which kind of ties in the additions that have been added over the last few years here, as well as ties into this new addition here to kind of spruce up the front of the building along the bus loop and tie in some of the the facade from this addition back to that steam addition that we put in years ago. And then lastly, we'll be doing the freight elevator replacement, which is getting outdated. So that'll get replaced as part of this this phase as well. The schedule for this is a little bit behind Prospect right now. We're looking at an SCD submission as design wraps up in the spring of 2022. That puts a bid period late summer, early fall of 2022, and then rolling right into construction right after we open bids and and late fall of 2022. Before I turn it over to Jeff for a little update on design, some of the concepts that they've been working on, does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, everybody.
All right, I'm Jeff Klutzer from Stiglitz Snyder. I'm going to basically pick up where I left off on the last presentation. I won't repeat a lot of information from what I gave you guys in the August presentation. I'm just going to give you really the new stuff. Pretty exciting because we really got into the interiors since the last meeting, and I think you'll like what you see today, hopefully. Primary tasks are pretty much the same right now. Julian gave me a good, gave a pretty good intro of what we're working on, really Prospect Edition and the high school, high school admin are kind of our focus at the moment. We got a variety of tasks that we are working on, but those have been our focus. We've started to give the administration a monthly update on our design progress. So we're listing everything we think we're working on at the moment. Anything that's been asked of us, we're trying to keep it all on a single page cheat sheet. So everybody knows what the design team's up to and what we're working on. Doesn't show up in the presentation, but since the last meeting, the Prospect roof, we got, you know, a lot of detail there. We had our roof consultant out do cores. We looked at all the equipment on the roof, trying to avoid change orders where you got to lift equipment off the building. You know, I want to go forward here. Yep, sorry. And put equipment back on the building. There's been increases in insulation values. So we've really, Delia and our team has put put a ton of time into that roof since the last meeting to make sure that's designed correctly now that it's added into the project. There won't be any pretty pictures of the roof, unfortunately, but we will get into the the additions and the renovated areas here. Okay, so the existing floor plan, which we've been through, addition off the front of the building in line with the the newer gym, the cafeteria, and then the addition fits in nicely there. That's the zoomed in view of that. And really, if you remember, the addition really has the steam classroom, the Seneca Cultural Space, the interactive learning space, and then a a support suite that takes offices that are all buried in classrooms now into an appropriate location and frees up classrooms for us. This is not new, so this is our same elevation. Okay, so the addition's going to fit right in with the building. We'll be matching the brick. Okay, so now we're getting into some new stuff here. What we did since the last meeting, we looked at all the interior finishes. We looked at some furnishings. We looked at some conceptual ideas of what the interior would look like for the purposeful play area, which is up here. Okay, so I, you enter the addition, this purposeful play area is opened to the corridor, and then I have my steam room, Seneca room, and then the open office area. Okay. We looked at a couple of different concepts and ultimately, based on decisions that have already been made in the building and the direction it was going with really the natural colors, the natural tones. We thought that was definitely going to be best. We looked at a couple of different options with the staff and the administration. And this is kind of just some ideas of the color ranges that we're looking at. Then we started looking at some conceptual rendering ideas and around the classrooms. One idea that we started exploring is doing a band that might be a graphic band higher up in the room that would give us an opportunity to maybe showcase a graphic, whatever it might be, either nature related or related to the subject that would be in the room. Then from there, we looked at some different possible bands that might work and what 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 each of those bands might mean to the room it would be in. And then we got into actual renderings of the spaces. So this is the purposeful play space. This door here would be the door you would enter to get in here. And then this is the, it's pretty tall space because it has to match the rest of the building. And then in here, we have basically different activities. We're going to have the Lego wall and some of the things that the administration wants. We're also going to have the ability to maybe put on a little storytelling, all different activities. And what we're seeing here is a mezzanine level where we're going to be able to have whiteboard underneath it, and the kids will have a lot of space to do different activities. This is new to us, purposeful play. It's not completely new overall. The State Education Department is starting to get more guidance out on it, but this really hits a lot of the bases of what we want to be able to do. Pull activities out and then let the kids, you know, experience that activity without, I'd say, the traditional classroom experience. And we think that we're on the right path to make that happen with where our design is going right here. This is our corridor that walks around to the multiple classrooms. Again, we're still in the purposeful play area. Okay, now we get into the student support space. And just to be clear on this, so what we're really doing here is right now, we have a lot of reading, math, maybe different intervention services throughout the building, taking up classroom space. By designing a suite appropriately for those activities, we can free up classrooms. So that's where this space comes into play. We have private spaces where you can work with a student. We have open spaces where we can work with a student. We have technology-driven spaces, and this really is meant to be a very flexible area where we can do almost any kind of intervention with a student. Okay, this gets into the Seneca Cultural Space. This is where we started out. Again, this band can be anything. And ultimately, we're going to want to input from the district on what that band ends up being and what it might mean to the Seneca Cultural Space. We started to show glass cabinetry. If we had artifacts or we had anything that we thought would be nice to display, that we'd be, that a teacher would interact with a student, it'd be nice to have something where when they come in, if they see something they're interested in, they can ask about it. You know, then pull it out and then be able to experience that with the teacher. So this is an initial rendering of that space. Okay, lots of whiteboard space, lots of, you know, the colors that we have throughout the rest of the the addition. This is looking out towards the parking loop. And then this is the steam room. Okay, so again, a similar space in terms of its form, but we can change things like the band and some of the colors. But again, bring it together maybe with the carpeting. But we're starting to think about what the cabinetry and things like that might look in these spaces, look like in these spaces. And you can see even trying to relay to the staff exactly what they're going to get. Okay, these are cabinets and and they're they're actually whiteboard services, so you can write on them. And by doing the renderings, we're able to, there's there won't be any surprises. You know, when this is built, everyone's going to know what it's going to look like. And then this is brand new, actually. The principal and her staff haven't seen this yet or the admin. This is something, I literally put stuff in here from today. We're starting to do the casework for the spaces and we'll review this with the admin and the staff to make sure we have it all correct. And then they're going to call out every piece of casework and what it means because in a steam room, you got a lot of casework because you got a lot of materials that you're going to want to interact with the students. Now we'll do the same for the Seneca room. So right now we have all the casework kind of outlined. And this is really in a condition now where we can present this to anybody. If there's other people outside the the admin, if there are stakeholders that you want us to involve, we're really in great shape now to be able to show the concept and get feedback from anybody that that wants to provide feedback for the addition. Okay, admin planning, I'll just go into this. So this is the image you've seen before of the addition. I'm just going to note here because it's going to come into play in a minute. This is what we called the clear story element. So the roof pops up kind of in the middle where the main corridor is. And what we're trying to do is get natural light into the middle of the building, and it'll show up in a rendering coming up here. Okay, just the only thing I want to recap on the floor plan, Julian, thank you for kind of giving the quick overview. So the blue is the offices. The yellow is really the collaboration. The Native American Services Suite is up here. It actually goes all the way to this end now. And I'm going to show a graphic of that. That's why I want to make sure everybody knows where that is. So that's the existing admin area now. Okay, so this is our, we we got a little feedback from admin on this, but this is our first go at the Native American Services Suite, and we want to be able to present this to their staff and their coordinators so that they can give us feedback. But a conceptual idea where we went is that on the corridor side, so you can imagine, some people might know where those staff bathrooms are over there. We lined the things that had to be private. So we got a conference room. We have a collaborative office. This used to be where the safe was, so that safe would come out to make room for everybody. And down here, we have the family services coordinator. And then really, the goal is to have this as a really flexible space. Large tables where you can gather with a group of students that might have an activity, a countertop with upper cabinets where you can take materials out and interact with the students. And then here, along the windows, this is all glass. So where our students are interacting with us, tutoring stations with reconfigurable furniture. So we show six tables lined up. You could put three together. You could pull two apart. There'll be a lot of flexibility for that. Video wall here, if we had an activity where we wanted to watch something, we'd be able to put it up for the the team or the individual groups as they're getting tutoring in the space. We thought it would be nice to have a display here. Oh, can we go back? A display here that might have some impact on the students. It's, one thought was current influential Native American display, where we'd have a display of different people who are current and and might have an impact on maybe students being able to see that and understand some kind of relationship to the suite itself, to Native American Services Suite. And then lastly, entry, we can enter from the high school and go in. We can enter from the admin and go in. There's a small lobby, and this is really the connection point between the high school and the admin. So again, we're we're excited about where it's going. We got to get some more feedback from the admin. They're just starting to see it too. And then, of course, from the people who are going to actually use the space, which is obviously very important to us, to get their feedback and see if it's going to work and see if they have ideas that we should be incorporating. Okay, what we're seeing here, again, just like Prospect, we're doing renderings of the interiors to start to get a feel for what it might look like. And these are early renderings, but this is the entrance into the addition. Right after you go past the entrance or past the the greeter, this is where you would be. If you can imagine, if I go in that direction, I'm going to the Native American Suite. If I go Services Suite, if I go this way, I'm going into the the admin building. So again, a shared entrance, and then they're connected through the high school. We're doing things like looking at how to incorporate graphics of things that you've put in your strategic plan. And we know a lot of time went into it. They all have meaning. So we're trying to start to look at things like that, like might be interesting to see that right in the building. Okay, and then once you enter into the admin, this is that clear story that's on the top of the building. So that's bringing natural light right into the middle of the building. And then this is really the spine. On one side, we have PPS and curriculum. The other side of the spine, we have the superintendent. We have personnel, human resources, and finance. But really, this is what brings everybody together, and that's what is, why, one of the reasons we want to do this clear story, bring that natural light in and encourage collaboration. And again, we're seeing some of those graphics of the strategic plan on some of the walls. And then here, just kind of seeing the impact of that clear story. It's a, so again, it's just a series of windows along the roof line, and it's bringing that natural light down in the space. What we're seeing here is one of the collaborative conference rooms, so that's right off the the main space. That can be closed up for a private meeting, or it can be opened up where you can have a much bigger event. If you have more staff there, you can rearrange the furniture and have a bigger group. So those are things we're looking at. And we're just starting to get into like how to incorporate, again, we're thinking about graphics and the design, how to have some indigenous elements in the design as well, and we're trying to get into that right now. These are early renderings for this piece of the project, as we're not going to be done until January with with the admin. But this is where we're at in terms of our progress. And most of this is, like I said, brand new. There's, the admin has seen this, a couple of these images, but these are hot off the press from, I think, Friday. And then lastly, I just left it in here, athletic fields. We don't really have much progress since last meeting. So what we showed you last time is kind of where we are at the moment, because I know we're thinking about different things with referendums. This was the original plan. That's what we're working on with the track. Okay, we've been talking about softball up here now, so we got, we're looking at that as well. And then we had the couple of images of a career reuse option last time as well, but again, that's kind of where we are at the moment. Okay, hopefully I didn't talk too fast. Sometimes I want to, I know you guys got a lot to talk about today. Any questions?
I had a couple. Um, back to the prop.
Yeah. Uh, no, those are, no, they're not. You know what? You're, you're absolutely correct. I did say that. I shouldn't have said carpet, though. It's actually, it's LVT. Sorry about that. And you're correct. So here, this this brings it together better. Let me bring it from here first. So this is LVT, which is a colored, basically, for anybody doesn't know, it's it's what VCT used to be the standard kind of classroom flooring. LVT is really a step up now, and we would either either use LVT or linoleum, and that's what is here. And what I was trying to say, like this base color, the gray color or brownish gray color will be inside those rooms to bring it together. And then we'll have other highlight colors. Let me get to it here, that you'll see, like here, we started to interject the red and a little, a couple of other colors. So we're trying to look at different colors to bring in. But absolutely, you're right. I said carpet. I should have said LVT. Yep.
Yeah, I was just concerned.
Yeah.
Kids and crafts and who knows what.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've, we've gotten rid of carpet in most spaces. I think libraries are kind of standard still, some of the office type spaces, but yeah, the classrooms, absolutely not. Yeah. I got ahead of myself. Any other questions?
The only other comment I had was I really liked the idea about the Native American Suite in general, but I like the fact that you guys even mentioned about putting influential indigenous folks on the wall in there even. I'm going to put.
Oh, no.
You guys have any idea of any influential indigenous folks that you might put on the wall?
I wish I knew. I wish I, I should have been prepared for that. No, because, but we talked about it. Yeah. We will, when we do the rendering, we will have people on there, though, that, some ideas that we came up with and then see how it looks.
What do you got, Mark? I like the humor, but seriously.
Well, I think anything from the president to any of our, sorry, the pepper.
Yeah.
Anything.
We were thinking current.
I mean, when we think of influential Native Americans right now, the first one that comes to my mind is Secretary Haaland. First Native American head of the Interior Department. You know, things like that. That's so, I mean, it's, you know, get the brainstorming now, but come up with some good ideas. I really like that, though.
I think there's some current artists, too. We did do a quick search, and there are some Native American artists who are really highly regarded who are current as well. You know, featured in museums and stuff like, so there, we could really mix it up and show something exciting there. Yep.
On the spot.
Yeah. Anybody else? Very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you for having us again, and we'll see you in a month or two again with our progress. Thank you. Yeah.
Next.
Next, we have our mentoring program presentation.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to introduce Karina Flag. She has been with us for about six to seven months right now as our mentoring program coordinator, as well as our educational consultant, Flip White, who has been a significant contributor to the program overall.
All right, now I scan out swag way ago. That means I'm thankful that all of you are well. That's our Seneca greeting. To start this, I was asked to come in as a consultant and to sort of guide, to assist, to get a mentoring program started. Couple, couple of things you should know. In Indian country right now, the feeling in in general is that a lot of the fix, the fixes to a lot of the issues that's facing Indian country is to go back to the roots, go back to our beginnings. And I'm I'm one of those advocates in that our societies a long time ago had had what we needed to live a good life, if you want to say that. And so this is just a quick look at, but it's years, this is years of work. I want you to know that. And it comes from a document called the Great Law. He said, and that is, some say 1,000, some say 2,000 years old. But I happen to be in my lifetime, it's just, I've had the experiences and just a good fortune to be around a lot of our traditional leadership. And I've learned so much from them. And in one of these meetings, a lady by the name of Carol Jacobs, she's Cayuga from the Bear Clan, and she's a Klein mother. And she's traveled to the United Nations. She's traveled internationally. She's outspoken leader for the Cayuga Nation and the Houdini Nishoni in general. And she made that statement, says, the Hoi'ane, all the people, the law and the way of life in the palms of their hands. The Hoi'ane is, it's a word for chiefs. But you'll see later in here at the bottom, it says, and it fit the program. One of the terms, phrases that people use when they talk about leadership, the Hoi'ane chiefs, is those who put the people on the right path. And if that isn't a great, great fit for a mentoring program, because that's what it's all about, trying to influence, trying to guide, trying to get people to make the right choices. So when I heard that, and it wasn't just me, there was a bunch of us, we were like, whoa, that's the basis, the foundation of the community. And what we did, we tried to make it sort of a contemporary look. So we used the Venn diagram to sort of illustrate the balance, the balance that's needed of these three components. Again, the people, the law, and the way of life. Okay? And here's, we start with the people. Everything always revolves around the people. Their condition, their health, everything about them, their family, their community, their influences. And our fundamental feeling, our fundamental statement from the Great Law is that we will never do harm to others. And when there's others, and I know this comes from a native perspective, that's huge all of humanity. That's every living spirit, every, every living entity in in our world, in this creation, has a spirit. So we have to live and do no harm to others. We'll practice good relations. I think that's just fundamental. It's the idea of getting along. It's sort of a team building, a synergy, that kind of, and then we'll practice holistic well-being. And I think that's probably one of the greatest gifts that came from our old ancient ancestors. Was that what's really important about every single person, it's again, your holistic, again, it's like your attitude, your emotional security. I mean, your, your degree of maturity, your physicalness, how you take care of yourself, not a great example of that. Your physicalness, how you take care of yourself, not a great example of that. And then the idea of spirituality. And when we talked about that, you'll see on the next slide, when we talk about spirituality, it, that can get real personal. So we sort of converted that to your character. Okay. So again, your attitude, your emotions, your physical, and then your character is what's really important to, to monitor or take care of. Then you go over here and this is really, um, again, I think it's one of the greatest little equations of life. Is that for as long as the earth moves, and if that's not permanent, I don't know what is. But as for as long as the earth moves, we will not compromise our responsibility to the people, the earth and the future. And in the traditional circles, that's how they make decisions. The chiefs, Klein mothers, those title holders, whenever they have a decision, they have to first determine the impact of that decision on the people, the earth and the future. And when you, if you apply that later and you think about it, it never misses. It's, it's just a foolproof equation. And then our law, I like this word. It's a covenant. It's almost like, it's a handshake. That's how it is. It's like when, when, when someone says boom, and I'm going to do this, that's what happens. That's what has to happen. So it's a covenant, covenant. It's a commitment to that. Our way of life again, some people de, um, define culture as the beliefs, values and habits. And I, I think I'm in agreement with that, those combinations. Again, it's like what we think about, what we value, and then our habits are, are what we do. And I think that's where cultures change. We have ceremony. We have that turtle rattle. I'll explain that in a little bit. We have, uh, our long houses. We have song. We have dance, all of those things. Each culture has all of this, but they express it in a different way. We all, you'll see when, at the end of this, how all of the, this value system and everything is you have it. Every single culture has it. And that's the beauty of this and that as we grow the program, um, it'll apply to all students. Right now we're working in, um, uh, young native, uh, males right now. So you want to move that? So how does this all fit? And sort of, we take that traditional thinking, very fundamental. How do we make this ACE mentoring program? Again, using the idea of good relations, adding a sense of belonging. People have to feel they belong. They're a part of any organization, school, a community, anything. They have to have that. There's that holistic wellbeing. But what's really interesting about that at this point is it is about the individual, but it's about this group also. What is the holistic, or I'm sorry, the collective attitude of this group? That's really important. You know, what is the collective problem solving skill of this group also? And compared to the individual, and again, us, um, are we able to endure? Are we able to handle those challenges that come before us? And then again, there's that spiritual and that's our, our character as a group. So it applies in both instances. And I think that's a real unique look at it and sort of an advantage of it. But again, it all starts with the people and this peace, I threw that in there because this is sort of, uh, not sort of, but the definition that we use under the great law of peace. It is about no war, getting along, that kind of thing, but it's also about your health. That's why we say Nyaue is a way of saying thank you. Then we say Nyaue Scanu, and that's a way of saying, I'm thankful that you're healthy. It's really important that we maintain that balance. So then if we come down to the law, you know, the three Rs in school, was it reading, writing, arithmetic? We've got a new one. Well, it's an old one, but sort of new. We believe the, the goal here in this, these laws is to be, always be respectful, to be responsible and to be reasonable. That's a real, real big one. You have to maintain your sense of reasonability. Then we come over here again, um, now let me go up here first. The network, this organizational network and this program has to have those good relations. And has to have a strong organizational health or wellness. And that includes all of these, whoop, what'd I do? Innocent. There we go. All right. So, but it's parents, it's the mentees, it's the mentors, it's this district, the board of education, other native programs. And the Seneca Nation Council, it's, everybody has to be involved in this to make that meter move in the right direction. And we have to be again, balanced, a really good, strong organization. Then going down here, the right environment in this case is that it's culturally centered. Raise your hand if you're familiar with the two row Wampum. It's that striped one. Well, one of those purple rows, it represents our way of life. And with this program, we're starting there. We fully believe that the identity of these young guys that we're working with is critical. They have to understand first who they are as Houdin Nishoni. Later in life, they'll make their choices and whatever, and it's all good. But as a base, and again, coming from the idea of our, our, our societies and our culture had all of the answers, that's where it starts. But we're going to follow that path and we're going to make sure those kids know who they are. And then they also have to have in this environment, a sense of safety and security. If, if you're not safe, feeling safe in your environment, you'll, it's a struggle. And if you're not secure in that element, it's double jeopardy. And we have to work towards cooperation if we ever want any level of trust to develop. Okay? So this is sort of a look at a traditional look, sort of a contemporary look and applying it to this ACE mentoring program. Are getting into it specifically, the results that we're looking for. This is really important. The ACE stands for to be deemed an asset in your community. That's what we're working for. We want others to look at these people, these young men and say, hey, he's a good one. Yep. Contributes. And that leads into the second one. C is to be a contributor. There are givers and there are takers, but we need more contributors right now. And to, 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 to contribute to your community, to, to build that community, to come home to that community, whatever that, that experience is. And the last one is to exemplify your best. Okay. It's your best version of you. That's what we're looking for. It's difficult and this is a process. This isn't a no overnight kindness, kind of, uh, adventure here. This is going to take some time. But what's really interesting, I was sitting there listening and looking around, look at that. Some of the same elements are in that. That's how universal this approach is. But again, we go back to the idea of, we want our young men to know who they are first. So when they go out into the world, they can answer that. They can, they can be there. They present that. That's what we want them to be, to be confident, not cocky, but confident. We want them to be kind, helpful. We, we want that kind of behavior where we're opening doors for ladies again. You know, that's what we want. So I hope that makes sense to you. Are there real, any quick questions? I'm going to turn it over to Karina. Is this sort of understood and, okay, great.
There you go. Oh God, technology. Look out. I'm going to mess this up.
Um, so this is why we are doing what we are doing. Uh, the, um, these are two narratives from two parents. So the first one says, I can see its promise for my kids and I know it'll help to establish new community of supports. Expand boundaries for amazing experiences, provide safe spaces for my kids to learn from community members and push to find success. And the second one says, I feel this investment in our youth will have a seventh generational impact. So this is why Flip and I really took the time to, you know, kind of get our vision and see what, what do we want this program to do? What's the ultimate goal? So how do we do this? By investing time in our youth. So the mentors are expected to spend about an hour per week, per kid that they have at least. Sometimes they do more, sometimes, you know, they might, um, miss a week and, you know, double up on their hours, but so they do that to exemplify qualities that positively impact themselves, the community and the future. So these are the tools we are using to help exemplify the mentees qualities.
Yeah. Trade you again. Change. We want improvement. We want to make, we want to influence. The only way that really happens, we can talk about it, but it's behavior. Everything is in, you know, in behavior. I've been on about 52 diets, you know, and I never changed my behavior. So I stay on a diet, you know? How many times have people quit cigarette smoking? Yeah, I quit smoking six times, you know, that kind of thing. It's all through behavior. When you make behavior change, the reality of what you're trying to do will happen. Engagement. These mentors have to listen. They have to create a relationship with these young men. They have to just like, it, it's all about that, that relationship building that has to take place. The idea of empowerment is that the mentors then have to provide the experiences, those ingredients that will make an impact on their lives. And we've got stories to tell you about what has happened already. And we've had some excellent, excellent results. Encouragement, the whole world should go positive right now. We need to turn, turn that over. Start positive, be positive, act positive. You know, we can all tear down. What's that old adage? One person with a hammer can tear down a house, but it takes a team of people to build a house, you know? Inclusion. There's a real fine line between inclusive and inclusion. The, the inclusive is everyone. Involving everyone. In this inclusion, what we're talking about is that the mentor will do their best to share the decision-making. Those mentees got to have their say. They got to have their input in there. So we'll make sure that that happens. Intentionality. It's like what you do, teachers. Every day you come in here and you make sure every effort, everything that you're doing in a day is geared to make those students succeed. It's the same thing. The mentors have to prepare. They gotta almost have like a lesson plan. There's a reporting procedure and everything so that we know how these young men are doing and what the mentor is doing. And there's again, a lot of great stories there, but that's just focusing every day. You can't waste time. We don't have time to waste, you know? We have those boys in front of us. And the last one is communication. I think that's up there too, right? Yeah, we communicate. There's just never enough. You guys, the school district probably want more communication, more time, you know, it's the same way. If, if, if we communicate just once, we're failing. If we communicate three times, we're still failing. You have to get it to a point where it's understanding. So communication is real big. How that applies to those young men and those mentors again is they have to understand one another. They have to get that information to Karina. She's putting that in the reporting and everything like that. That's just fundamental, but it's the idea of parents talking with school administration, talking with those other native programs, any program, anyone that wants to offer to help. We would like to, um, next year, we're looking down the road. We'd like to be a part of the orientation. So that new teachers coming in, standing as they see this, we want to, we, we want to advocate this program, you know, very strongly. So back to you, my dear. Or I'll be your lovely assistant.
Um, so the goal is the mentees' behavior will manifest into future mentor behavior, which leads us to our ultimate goal. The mentees will be able to return as mentors one day. So phase one of the program, mentees were referred by their family, school liaisons. I have a referral form. I've been working really closely with them and they've been helping me out a lot with checking in with parents and just kind of helping me build that relationship with them. Phase two, mentees will be referred by school counselors. We're kind of getting there already. I had to refer today. So right now I have seven students total. The goal by the end of, um, the year would be to have 20. Next. So mentors were chosen based off the content of their character. And what we did, there was four of us. We gathered around a table and just started naming off names of people who we thought are pillars of the community. And we reached out and, you know, the work never stops with finding mentors. That's, that's one of the challenges that I've had is finding mentors, but lots of great community members. We have, um,
You ready? You got, this is probably the most dynamic part. We got Brett Mayby, radio personality, really outgoing. Who, you know, what young person doesn't like music? The guy worked in the radio industry. He has a nationally syndicated show now. We got Dennis Bowden, former president of the United, um, yeah, I was going to say United Nations, the Seneca Nation. He has spent probably 35 to 40 years doing work with youth, um, after his political career. If you know Dennis, uh, is a gentle giant. And he, he, he brings with him also, um, the culture of the Navajo. His wife is Navajo. So it, it, it's, it's an amazing conversation when you sit and talk with those two. And I think that he'll be just incredible. We have a young man, um, hell's Johnny John. He's like a cultural icon, you know, this young one, you know? He's a singer and a dancer and everything, but he's, he too, right now, if you get to know him and you, you look at him, he's taken control of his life. He's taken control of his family. He's a dad now. I was, he's working hard. I think he's got two jobs actually right now. He's working real, real hard. He's real. Wants to take care of his son and everything. And I think he's a, an, another great one. We have Dallas Holt. I don't know if you people know Dallas Holt. He has this, I can't even explain it. You tell them about Dallas's house.
Oh my gosh, it looks like a comic book store. It's full of board games, you know, full, full of everything, everything that you can think of. He has thousands of games. His collection is amazing.
And they're different. I don't know where he gets these games. I mean, there's Monopoly and whatever, but there's all kinds of other games. And what's happening, he has, is having such success. He started with a mentee and all of a sudden that network is just growing. And there's other people saying, man, that's really cool what they do. And what we try to provide with all these, the, the mentors and everything is, is we didn't want them to sit down and talk to them. We wanted them, go do something. And while you're doing that, share whatever that message is at that time. And it's working. We have a partnership with, uh, the conservation department. Everything, fishing, archery, boating, canoeing, just they got it all down there. And they're actually building a cabin. Where all the crafts can be made and everything like that. So it's like, it's ideal. But, uh, we have, we have a, a really good pool. Did, who'd I leave out?
Caleb.
Caleb. You guys remember Caleb? Caleb Abrams, award-winning film filmmaker now, international. And he did the thing about Kanzua. He might be just the guy to delete this project and say, let's put this project on, on video. Let's tape it. He's, just might be that guy and he's got all the skills, all the experience, uh, sort of the reputation. He's, what he's doing is incredible. And well, I think that's just something great that again, young people are interested in that technology, video and everything like that. So and that's just some of them, but we have a really dynamic group and we're really proud of that. And it, it comes from the, sitting around the table one day and said, who is this? Who should we get? It's like boom, boom, boom. And they're responding. Oh my goodness. All right. So, so we move on here?
Yeah.
Okay. I got talking.
So this is how I match them. I matched them on paper first. Um, and then after they're matched, I coordinate a meeting with the parent, the student and their mentor. And I just sit with them for an hour and just make sure that the matches, that it's going to work. Make sure that they can, you know, that they kind of click. So it's worked so far. And I think it's really important to get the parents involved too. And that's a really good way to kind of start out on a good foot.
Uh, this is a good example of a collaboration. It's a great example of our cultural thinking. You see that representation? And I'm sure most of you from around the area have seen a turtle rattle that we use and we use it, you know, in a longhouse and for dancing. Then there's a Osawakua, which is a great feather dance. There are people who said, I shouldn't present this and show it to people, but I, I, I do. I guess I'm going against the grain, but it's, it's, it is the basis of our world. And you can see in here, there's thirteen plates on the back of the snapping turtle. That's our calendar. And there's much more to, to what each one represents. And then these platelets going around here, there's twenty-eight of them. And that's our, that's that month. We have thirteen months, twenty-eight days each. That's our cycle. But again, we use it as a representation of everything. And if you look here, and I mentioned a collaboration, what, what is really, really good about this is that this school is using this now. You know, it's in place. And this program that we're bringing along that's evolving just supports all of this. Again, it's in Seneca, but again, helping. That, that's fundamental to our societies. And same thing again on that banner. The idea of responsibility, taking care of self, that's that whole list. We have to know our song. We have to know our language. We have to know that because that's the only way we can use it properly. Okay? Giving thanks, gononyo, encouragement, truth, truth, strength, love, nonwa. Respect, all of these things that we had there. That's all there. It's on the back of that turtle. It's our world. And again, if this were able to lay down, you would stand on it. And that would be Mother Earth. And in there again, it's its entire being. You guys know the story about the creation? I saw him back for turtle and that whole thing. Okay. We'll have to tell you a real deep one, one time. It takes about three, good three hours to tell you. There's, there's a lot more to it than it. There was a hole she fell, she landed on a turtle. There's a whole lot, a lot of meaning. So where, where are we at here?
That's it.
Is that it? Now, can I jump in a little bit? I get excited about this. I want to talk about her. You chose a good one. Here's what many discussions. This was rolled out in late spring. And then we had, you know, COVID. End of the school year, school was up and down and all over the place. Tried to fit five, I think, five sports into one season. Had this new beautiful facility. So we struggled in the beginning because the students were just occupied elsewhere. But it gave us a lot of time to really think about this. And I didn't know Karina until we started working on this project together. But she's very creative. She is very committed. Uh, for those of you who don't know, she was in a hospital about two weeks ago, a week or so. And she's still a little hurting, but she's there. Um, she participates. She goes to some of these sessions herself with the mentor. She picks up the mentees, make sure that they get there. One of the best things that she did was she, we kept looking at the program. We want to say, how do we make it better? How do we make it better? And I think all of you would agree that one of the biggest pieces missing, and it's not all or none, but there's sort of that reputation, the, the parents aren't in the game all the time. That's what she's doing. She went to their homes. It wasn't just a call, hey, we got a new program. What do you think? She went there and then we talked one day and we said, let's take it to another level. So she's calling parents now and the first meeting is dinner on her. And she's saying, let's sit down and talk about this. And there's the, the student, the parent, her, the program, everything like that. And I think that is just awesome, just so awesome that she did that. And she just keeps, I don't know, she has a great sense of, uh, her energy. Her energy is endless. The people in the community love her and they're listening to her. And we're getting great feedback from the parents, those that are involved. Schools now started, so the numbers are going to increase. We're going to have to get more mentors and stuff and continue developing. And I think one of the, I hope I can say this right, but we haven't had uh, the experience of, oh, they shouldn't have done that. We, we haven't had that. It's worked. So I would credit her again with her training and the rollout and the understanding of what they have to do. And we all get certified as mentors through New York State, right? Yeah. So there's a sort of covering all the bases. Okay. And she's doing a great job. I love working with her.
Thank you. That was a really great presentation and it's exciting to see the work that you're doing. So congratulations to both of you. We appreciate it. Next we'll move on to our school safety and reopening, which probably won't be as exciting.
It will be nowhere near as exciting. Um, so today is the thirteenth date of school for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, we are continuing to monitor the active cases of COVID so that we can respond appropriately. There's been a general decline in active COVID cases over the past week to ten days. But we are still at levels that are concerning in our immediate region. We currently have a large number of students that are quarantined at home as well as staff members. Um, while our staff has adapted very well to the ongoing changes, these are some significant stresses. And I want to take another moment to just acknowledge the great work that our staff has done and continues to demonstrate as we sort of get back into the swing of things with students on campus. Um, and then having to make shifts and changes as new regulations come down as well as new challenges with students who are quarantined as well as staff members. So thank you. Our protocols and practices really have not changed since the opening of school, but just a reminder for any of our staff members. It really is very simple. Um, if you have a question or a concern regarding quarantining, illness, anything COVID related, it really boils down to call Ray Haley. He is sort of the one-stop shop with um, coordinating HR for time off if necessary, assisting with getting tested, reporting to the county. Um, his daily routine typically is, you know, uh, has the majority of it spent dealing with, um, ongoing COVID cases. So, um, but we're back. Students are in school, sporting events are happening. Um, and it's just great to see our students back on campus.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Then we'll move on to communications. Do we have anyone from Title VI? Okay. All right. Then do we have anyone?
Let me, go ahead. Title VI though, uh, we do have elections going on tomorrow for the, the parent committee and, um, that'll be going on all day long at the administration building, Seneca Nation Administration Building, and then also at Vets Park. So we're getting new, uh, hopefully getting new officers on the Title VI Parent Committee.
We'll move on to central office message. Uh, Ms. McGara is not with us tonight. So we'll move on to Dr. Beeler.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, again, just want to say thank you to the hard work. Um, and welcome some of the new staff members that we anticipate appointing today. Anticipate that Mr. Bridenstine has, um, some information regarding the most recent incidents and I don't want to, uh, be a spoiler for that. So I'll, I'll end my remarks here and let him continue.
We'll move on to the board message. Let's start with Dale.
Good night, Teresa. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad?
Congratulations to all the sports teams that were victorious since the last meeting. And I just wanted to mention something based on the recent events as far as community involvement and encouraging the community to reach out to any board members if they see or hear anything suspicious, even though this one was not deemed the threat that we thought it was. I'm sure there's other stuff out there. And that's all I got.
Sue?
We're interested in hearing from our superintendent.
Barb?
I'd like to welcome Jessica again to the Board of Education and all new staff members. I wish everyone a safe and great school year. And I was, um, interested to see the purposeful play area in the presentation. I had the opportunity to visit Lisa's classroom when they were doing that program. And I think it's very beneficial for children. So good to see.
Jess, do you have anything that you want to add?
Just want to say hello and I hope everybody stays safe and healthy. And, uh, I look forward to learning a lot more. And, uh, thank you for, for all your support.
We can, should be able to hear you.
Okay. I just. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I just wanted to say hello and, uh, I hope everybody stays safe and healthy. And I look forward to learning a lot from you all. And, uh, thank you for your support.
Thanks Jess. Carrie?
I just wanted to say welcome to Jess as well. I'm glad you've, uh, you're aboard and looking forward to working with you. Um. Honestly, I don't have too much to say tonight, other than those were a couple of good presentations we saw. I really enjoyed the presentation that Karina and Flip put on. That's it.
I'd also like to again say welcome aboard Jess. I'm excited, uh, that you've joined the board. Again, it is good to have a, a full board again. So, uh, we look forward to teaching you our secret ways. Just kidding. I would, uh, also encourage anyone, if they do ever have any concerns about the school, you can reach out to any of the board members. We are online. We do give, check our emails. And, uh, if you don't feel comfortable reaching out to us, make sure you reach out to an administrator, a teacher, any, anyone in the school district, they're more than welcome to help you out and can guide you in the right direction to make sure that, uh, if you do have concerns that they're heard and that we can help address and take care of any situation. And with that, I will turn it over to, uh, Bob, Super Bob.
Thank you. Um, so first greetings and my apologies for not being at the meeting in person. I just landed a few minutes ago from a return trip from Washington DC at the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools where I was presenting on our family liaison program. And before I dive into the events of, uh, late Sunday and Monday, uh, just a couple of quick comments, uh, about the trip and the importance of going down to Washington DC. And while the lobbying portion of the trip was relatively small and tightly knit, um, the importance of having the district represent, uh, Salamanca in Washington DC where these, uh, events happen, uh, as Alexander Hamilton said, you need to be in the room where things happen. And being down to DC, um, is something that really helps to put Salamanca front and center both on a New York State indigenous platform. We were one of only three school districts from approximately forty that went down, uh, and participated either virtually or in person. Uh, it's important to be there to advocate for the impacted schools across the country. It's important to represent Salamanca. And I had the opportunity to present on our family liaison program and talk with many school districts, uh, and tribal entities from across the country. And from just about all fifty states, we're able to participate in some way, shape or form. So that's an important part of what we do and an important board goal of celebrating the success that we have found in Salamanca by engaging our families, listening to our community and making good decisions that help, uh, all of our students and their families. And that really kind of takes me as a segue to the events of very late Sunday evening. And so, uh, just on a personal note, um, I, I think I need to pass the, uh, traveling to Washington DC trip to mark. This is the third time I've been in DC where I've had to close schools, twice for weather and once for the events of Sunday. And it's really important to note, I think, that when you receive a phone call late into the night from the police department as a superintendent, there are very few times where that's a good call. Um, and Sunday was certainly one of those instances where it was not a good call. At eight forty-five, when I received the phone call from the Salamanca Police, literally my heart dropped. Um, and, um, my first instinct was, uh, what would normally happen? Okay, take a deep breath. Let's get all the facts. And at that time at eight forty-five, we were sh- short on facts. We knew that multiple students had made a threat. We weren't sure who all of the intended targets were or even what the target was. There was great uncertainty as to the events that transpired that had been happening for several hours before I received a call. After maybe a twenty-five minute phone call, um, I ended with the Salamanca Police Department. And my first phone calls, um, were to my administrative team, to Dr. Beeler, to Mr. Seibert, to Mr. Haley and to the SROs. And if you can imagine nine o'clock on a Sunday after a, a great Bills victory, um, it, it took me a few minutes to connect with the entire team. But within seconds of connecting with them, we had a command center going across multiple states. And we were getting to the bottom of what we needed to do immediately. And I, I will tell you, I instantly knew that I thought it was going to be a very, very long night. I, I wasn't sure how long, but we've been here before and school leaders are often here before. And it was important that we got more facts, that we divided up the responsibilities. We had task responsibilities from an incident command structure. And I will tell you, we couldn't have done what we did in the timeframe that we needed to do it if it wasn't for the work of our three SROs, Ronnie Smith in particular, Matt D-Boy and Steve Dombeck, Ray Haley, Chris Seibert, uh, Mark Beeler and other administrators who were standing by whether they were on the call because it directly impacted their buildings or standing in the wings saying, tell me what you need me to do. We'll get it done. And this is late into the evening. And finally, at about eleven PM, in a conference call, again with the Salamanca Police Department, Dr. Beeler and myself, I made the decision to close school. And we have stated from the pandemic forward and even before the pandemic, our priority is to teach and create a learning environment and to keep people safe and to keep people informed and to communicate. I wasn't sure at eleven PM that I could keep people safe. And it wasn't that I would be on the ground or administrators would be doing law enforcement, but we have an obligation as a district to make sure that everyone is as safe as we can make them. And eleven PM, when three of the four alleged students were still unaccounted for and there wasn't certainty if a gun was or was not involved. And we had parents who were uncooperative with law enforcement. The decision to close was easy, but it was still gut-wrenching because closing is easy. Putting things back together and making sure everyone felt safe is a challenge. But in Salamanca, I knew we were in good hands. Chris Seibert, Lynn McGara, Bob Finch in Transportation, Karen McGara in the Business Office, Mark Beeler, Ray Haley, our SROs, our administrators at the elementary and intermediate schools were ready to take action and make sure that we were safe. It wasn't until approximately eight AM on Monday morning that we knew that the students were accounted for, that we knew that it was not a gun being brought into school. And in fact, that the school was not even targeted, that that was not accurate as originally reported. And experientially, social media doesn't help these things. And there were. And there were old posts that resurfaced and rumors that continued to swirl. I do want to commend the community, however. They kept it tight. They kept it very secure. They didn't blow up the internet with all kinds of wild accusations or innuendos or things that they heard from someone who heard something. The community took this with the level of seriousness that it was. And from 8:45 until about 7:30 in the morning, we were still at the equivalent of DEFCON 1 for safety and security. Now, working through on Monday, again with law enforcement and school personnel, we came away with some things that I think are really important. And when you have a crisis, making sure that everyone is safe, making sure that everyone knows what their responsibility is, does really follow the incident command structure quite well. But then what happens afterward is is equally important, but oftentimes doesn't get the notoriety or the publicity, and that's the debriefing that occurs. And we've walked away from this with a couple of things that, that I, I want to acknowledge. One, we have students in our community who are in deep peril with law enforcement and making good choices from a legal perspective, and that filters into school. None of this happened in school, but it involved everyone that comes into school. And there's a legal threshold that I meet when I have to determine with the building administrator if something needs to happen to those students from a disciplinary consequence. And we took that measure and we based that on the facts, and that's been handled. But we still have other students who've now reported to us that this has been ongoing in the community, and we need to pool our resources with the Seneca Nation, with the City of Salamanca to make sure those students, both the victims of this kind of behavior or threats, or the perpetrators or alleged perpetrators of these actions, and the law enforcement system will ferret that out, make sure that everyone gets the help and the attention that they need, but never at a point where we can compromise students' or families' safety. The other part, too, that we came away from this is, no matter how well we think we did, we can still do better. And we reached out to the City of Salamanca, both the mayor and to council members and to the chief of police on several occasions and said, we are here to help. Never again should it take the SPD or the county four, or five, or six hours to determine who students are based on a video surveillance. We can help them identify students in crisis. We can help them identify students who have a need for our assistance and that we have deep relationships with these families. We can have conversations with families that police and law enforcement can't have about public safety. That's a big takeaway from this. We can also take away from this that when there is a crisis, it's not about ego, it's not about territory, it's not about who gets credit. It's making sure that everyone is safe. And I, I'm awfully proud of the interagency collaboration between the SPD, the Cat County Sheriff's Department, the school district, and the Seneca Nation. And when we called, or they called, we just made things happen that kept everyone safer. And I want to end with kind of this conversation, and I know that tomorrow the District Safety Committee is meeting to talk about some of these issues. And part of my request is, is what we've learned from this. And this incident didn't just materialize on Sunday. There were precursors that were happening in the community that we've now come to a better understanding about the trigger events that created this dynamic happening as early as the middle of last week between students. And there were several competing things happening in the community with students that materialized on Sunday. And I'm going to ask the community for their assistance when these things happen. If your child comes home and tells you that something is happening, please listen. And I think our parents do a great job of doing that, but please take that to the next step. We have a robust level of school counselors, family liaisons, school social workers. We have nurses, we have administrators, we have all manner of personnel. And having come from the airport in Washington DC, I think it's important to know when we see something, we should say something. Because it, what may seem seemingly insignificant, when you start to put multiple pieces together of the dynamics that families and communities are going through, it paints a different picture than a single isolated incident. And we can mobilize and materialize our supports sooner, earlier, and faster so we never get to the point again where we have a threat that we can't verify and community and family members scared. And that's my most current pressing issue is that we still have families in crisis from this. We have the families of the students that allegedly made these threats, that they are in crisis. We have families that were targeted that still will be in crisis. And we know from our work with trauma-informed care and restorative justice practices with our students that historical trauma is something that you carry with you for a long time. And we can learn from this, make ourselves safer, and also make ourselves and our community more well when we continue to collaborate. The district can be awfully proud. The community, the police departments, law enforcement agencies, the Seneca Nation, and everyone involved can be awfully proud of the fact that we made sure that we were safe and at least as safe as we can be. I'm going to stop here if there's any, I have a few other things to add, and I know that was a little bit longer than I had planned. But I'm going to stop here, and if there's any other questions about the events of Sunday and Monday.
Any questions?
Questions, Bob. I fully supported our decision and backed you 100% on closing school for Monday. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, hearing that, I've got a couple of other things that I want to say. And one is, I am, just want to let the board members know if you hadn't seen your emails, but the New York State School Board Convention in New York City next month was canceled. There is a virtual event of the keynote speakers. We did have two presentations, one from Mrs. Dudak and Mr. Parisi about pupil services, and the other was our student advocacy group on the journey that they took in convincing the school board about raising the progressive pride flag and getting a new flagpole dedicated to that important student-centered mission. We'll talk and look at the schedule and get them on a board agenda to kind of give us the, the, their presentation in New York City was 90 minutes. We'll ask them to come at a later date, probably in November, and talk to us about the, the presentations that they were going to do. And then the last piece that I, I wanted to note for the school board members was regarding something that Dr. Beeler had noted briefly about a reopening plan. And I, I do want to comment on the immunization slash vaccination piece as it relates to staff. Board members, you know that I've been updating you regularly on staff members who have identified themselves as being vaccinated or those who have said that they are opting out as required by the most recent New York State Department of Health and executive orders from the governor. I'm, I'm pleased to report that those numbers are starting to shift with individuals choosing to tell us what their status is and letting us know that more individuals have reported their vaccinations than we were approximately two weeks ago when this first emerged. Now approaching three works, weeks now that I think about it. At that time, three weeks ago, we had about 130 staff members vaccinated out of approximately 400, and that 400 number includes everyone, even spring coaches from last year that are still on the books, substitutes who may not be subbing with us, it's everyone. So the number of 400 is probably closer to 350 actually. And our number of individuals who've identified that they are vaccinated is close to 270. So we've made a significant progress on that realm. And it obviously is the individuals' decision at this point in time. We have not yet begun weekly testing. They are still working on that protocol from the county. We continue to remind people that we'd like them to let us know what their status is or be prepared to submit for weekly testing as ordered. I'm not aware of any district in Cat County or Allegheny County who has started the mandatory weekly testing. But we are continuing to work on that. We did have a meeting last week, Friday, where we continue to talk about those dynamics, the inability of the county to get tests and the fact that the EMTs who were previously doing mobile testing units, that legislation lapsed September 1st. And so the EMTs were not in a position to continue to test by state law where previously they were able to. So there is a lot of moving, there are a lot of moving parts with the vaccination immunization order. And I'll let the political pundits comment on whether or not that is good public policy or not, but I would just simply state that we will comply with public policy. It's what we do. It's the role that we take in being models for students. We will follow the regulations, and when we have concerns, we will vocalize those concerns and advocate to make things change, to make them better for everyone. Thanks, everybody.
Does anyone have any other questions for Bob? All right.
Hi, excuse me. Who pays for the testing if you opt out of the chat?
That's a really good question, Sue. Superintendent's met about a month and a half ago when the federal money was allocated to New York State and then Cat County received their allocation. We were under the distinct impression, all 22 of us, that the county would be covering the costs of all of the tests. I'm not sure if that's still the standard that is going to be used. It's still evolving.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions on any of the items? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up from Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. We have no old business. Our new business, item A, is our change orders. So we need a motion to approve the two change, two or three change orders above. Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions on the change orders? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up from Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item B is our contract for Every Person Influences Children. So we need a motion to approve that contract. Motion by Sue. Second by Dale. Mark, would you like to give us a brief rundown, please?
I would love to. So Every Person Influences Children is commonly referred to EPIC. It's an organization with its headquarters located in Buffalo, which is fortunate for us. They have a mission of helping families, schools, and communities raise children to become responsible and successful adults. The proposal before you is to open an EPIC Support Center with Salamanca Schools in Salamanca and provide a full-time family engagement manager and trainer and a full-time family engagement coordinator. In addition, the EPIC's Director of Family Engagement will provide training and team building for all of our family support workers. And that training is important because we've just added five new family support workers over the past month. Some of them have a wide range of experience in this particular field and particularly in the environment we're in right now. But EPIC has a pretty significant presence here, and some of the topics that our individuals will be trained on is things like understanding poverty mindset, differentiated family engagement, raising resilience, communication skills for challenging conversations, and conflict management. So all of our family support workers will receive a baseline of training from people who are professionals in this who have developed an actual curriculum that they use across New York State. They, in addition to that, they're also going to be providing programming for our students, our staff, as well as for the community, topics such as preschool basic reading, a Just For Me program, which helps students in middle school with life skills, programming called Just For Teens, which is for pregnant and parenting teens, tech savvy. So they assist parents with things ranging from online safety to how to assist with homework online. And then Ready Sit Read, which is a big one that is utilized with students prior to school, so our pre-K students and even earlier than that. In summary, the total cost is completely provided and written into the American Recovery Program grant. So it's covered through the ARP grant, and it'll provide our students and our grownups with a wide range of skills from reading to young children to parenting skills as well as the tech skills that are necessary, completely aligned with our district mission as well as our Title I requirements. And we're looking forward to getting them on board as soon as possible.
Do we have any other questions or comments? We have a motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up from Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item C, we need a motion to create six full-time permanent building substitutes and one full-time account for type S effective September 22nd, 2021. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the positions? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up from Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item D is our substitute bus driver. The rate will change from $15.50 to $17 an hour. Substitute retired bus drivers will change from 18 an hour to 23 an hour. We need a motion to approve those rate changes. Motion by Sue. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item E is our adult education program for the fall of 2021. So we need a motion to approve the program course offerings. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on adult ed? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item F are items that are being declared surplus. So we have a couple of study sync, reading and writing companion, about 148 books. And then another sync, reading and writing emotional current, 64 books. So we need a motion to declare them surplus. Motion by Dale. Second by Carrie. Do we have any questions on any of these books? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Item A is our Personnel Consent Agenda. So we need a motion to approve our Personnel Consent Agenda. Motion by Dale. Second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oops. Thumbs up by Jess. Sorry, Jess. So all in favor, no opposed. Motion carried. We have our Personnel Action Number Two. So we need a motion to approve Personnel Action Number Two. Motion by Barb. Second by Brad. All in favor? Thumbs up by Jess. I will abstain. Motion carried. And item E is our confidential managerial contract. We need a motion to approve the contract from September 27th through June 30th of 2024 for Marilyn Reeves. Motion by Barb. Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Jess. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And now, let's introduce some people.
I'm going to add. Yes, I'm going to ask Mrs. Dudak to introduce our new warrior, Marilyn Reeves.
All right, thank you, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that took part in the interview process. The process included a wide pool of applicants and Mary Lynn made it down to our final two out of twenty-seven. So the process, Dr., no pressure at all. Dr. Simbretz and Mr. Parisi, Nancy Williams from the Nation and Mr. Breidenstein all took part in part of the interviews along with Josie Hubbard. And I can't say enough about Mary Lynn. She comes with a wealth of knowledge. She has been confidential secretary in a previous district and understands the financial aspects, which will help tremendously with the data and with the grants moving forward. But we're excited to have her as part of our team and excited to have her become a warrior with us tonight. So thank you, Mary Lynn, for jumping in and, and being with us, starting on the twenty-seventh.
And I believe that is all of our new appointees that are here this evening.
Item nine is our board information and reports. So we'll just skip on, we have first readings of quite a few different policies. Please make sure you read them and if there's any changes, mark them down, get back to Bob and Karen and Mark so that they know what they are. Our upcoming event, September twenty-second is the District Safety Meeting. And you said it's also the election for Title Six, Kerry, correct? And Title Six is at the, is it at the SAB?
Being held at the Administration Building and also at Vets Park.
Okay. So please go and vote. And then September thirtieth will be our Personnel Committee meeting and then we have open house also on September thirtieth from five to six thirty. October fifth will be our next Board of Education meeting. So Janet had mentioned that our municipal convention is canceled. So all board members be aware of that. Our next tentative board retreat will be November ninth. So if you can't make it, please let us know so we can reschedule if too many of us can't make it. And with that, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of property acquisition. Motion by Sue, second by Kerry, all in favor? Aye. Thumbs up by Jess, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We will not have any action coming out of the meeting, so there is no need to stick around unless you really want to just hear us come out and adjourn. But thank you for attending.
Mark, do you want to just call me from the library or have me stand?